Yeah.
They were maybe.
You're like, we don't know where he is.
They were talking about one person they're waiting, wanted to be there waiting for.
Okay, that's it's not the, it's eight, not four thirty.
Oh, I meant to join this.
Oh, good. Sue Ellen is here. She can talk about streetlights.
Yeah, I'm the streetlights.
It's all everyone want to talk about their map.
We're gonna keep that streetlight talk short. Matt wants to get home before midnight.
I agree.
Well, you're in Chicago, right? So you got what? You're two hours behind or an hour behind us? So.
It's an hour.
An hour? Okay.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in the waiting room? What's the first name?
She has burned that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alex, they're on it.
Yeah, I feel like.
It's a street.
That's not the night.
Yes. She's, she's very. Yeah.
Maybe that's what they look for on the agenda.
Okay. Guys, ready?
Yes.
Alex, you ready? Let in, let in the few people. Okay, alright. We stand and for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, what nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Alright, we're in bulk order, calling to order the town of Kensington Town Council meeting for Tuesday, November eighteenth. Welcome, everybody. We have some guests here tonight as a troop eight, is that correct? Okay, at some point, did you want to, we're gonna do a couple little things and then if somebody wants to volunteer, just tell us why you're here, that'd be great. Okay? Alright, um, council, we have the next item on for on the agenda is a moment of silence. Is there anyone we'd like to lift up or to remember? Okay, if we can bow our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. One is the town council meeting and one is the October thirty-first council work session. I think we had a couple of edits that went around to everybody on the town council meeting. And I think everybody said they were okay with that. So if I can get a motion to approve.
Should I move to approve the minutes from the October eighth, twenty twenty-five town council meeting?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on the next item is the October thirty-first council work session. I didn't see any edits on that.
I think I edited both.
Did you?
Yeah, but they're in, they're incorporated.
Okay, alright. Could I get a, um, motions?
Sure, I will move to accept the minutes from the October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five work session.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Was that Albert?
That was me.
I'm sure. Alrighty, um, could I get somebody from the troop to come up front and just introduce yourself and why you're here? Anybody up for that? We'll take the leader.
Alright, we're from Boy Scout troop eight. We meet in Kensington's church, was it North, North Community Church on Kensington Parkway? And all the scouts here are working on communications merit badge. So they're here listening to your communication styles and how effectively everyone communicates their messages. So.
Well, okay, well, I'm glad I heard that. Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody's come for that one here before. I don't remember that. Okay. Alright, well, let's, let's go down to number one. We want to acknowledge that we sent out a state highway administration letter. Does anybody want to highlight that at all or?
Do you want to start?
Yeah, I can, I can take that. This is reflective of a lot of work, collaborative work from across several council members. Just want to acknowledge our work by Nate, council member Angle, and Mayor, and Councilman Crimmins, and, and Councilman Lecter to kind of, really kind of come together to kind of charter course in a little bit of a, of a stressful period for some families, some local families. This is in response to some fatalities we've had along University Boulevard in the last several months. We had, um, unfortunately, three fatalities, starting in the summer. We had a woman who was hit by UPS or a postal truck, right by the Dunkin' Donuts there. Then we had a young man who was struck and killed, um, in September. And then we had another woman who was actually killed outside of the town boundaries, but nevertheless, it's along the border of the town and it really is along a pretty important, um, throughway for our town. So we, we said, look, enough is enough here. We have to, we have to get, uh, active. And we kind of came together and it's really, as a result, a lot of advocacy and advice and coordination with not just this group of folks here, but other elected officials, both at the state and, um, the state level, both in the senate and the house, to kind of come together and start to lobby the administrative state highway administration. So we decided to put together a letter. We, we, um, we coordinated that with a lot of other elected officials, delegate Solomon, um, state delegate Fanny Gonzalez, Jeff Walzstreich, our senator, uh, was part of that. And we sent that out to Administrator Pines, um, and they've acknowledged, we'll see. And for folks, without getting into a lot of backstory, there's been a little bit of telephone game with state highway. We've been sending some emails and they haven't been responsive all the time. So the fact that we got acknowledgement is a great sign. Um, and it's just the start, I hope, uh, for some, from, for some further advocacy with that group. Um, and then, uh, this weekend, Councilmember Angle and I, we, we participated in a bike ride event to memorialize James Anderson. We actually ran it to a couple of folks from state highway administration. We made some really important connections with them and, and they are committed. You know, they doubled down on their commitment to this area and, and these, these issues. Gentleman from the Department, the State Department of Transportation also spoke at the event and he was, he said, look, we are committed to trying to fix this and work with the community. So it's encouraging. But like I said, it's just the first step and we're certainly not going to let off the gas. So, um, that letter went out. Um, and we're very, um, we're appreciative of all the support from Matt and, and from Alex and the rest of the, the council members to get that out the door. So thank you.
I got a, um, text from a resident, said it was a really good letter. Appreciate the fact that she threw all the agenda attachments. Said she, she actually read the whole thing. She said it was great. Um, who, who from the state highway was at the, uh, in Bethesda for the ride?
So you met, I forget the.
Jonathan.
But John Rogers was there, who now, who is a member of our PBAS MTC.
Okay.
Um, and he's in, in a position where he can help us with this located connection. But there was also.
Woman named Meg, who I didn't catch up with. Young, maybe? Meg Young is maybe her last name? She, she's really contouring their grants program.
Okay.
And so I, Nate has connected me with Jonathan and I, I owe him and Meg an email to kind of start the conversation to see if, what we can do from like a micro grants kind of perspective. So.
Okay.
One thing we're stressed with them is, is really like, you know, we would love to have large infrastructure projects done. That would be great, you know, but the reality is that's, that's a long time and, and takes a lot of. Responding and all the, so what, what I am interested in, and I, and I won't speak for Councilmember Angle, but I'm interested in like small quick wings that we can get, you know, um, little things that we can start to kind of tweak around the margins to make some improvements. And even that is, I think, you know, is doable. So she was encouraged by that. I think we have some further conversations to have, but I think it was encouraging to start.
John even mentioned that even some of the larger infrastructure improvements, like the road diet we're discussing with them, which is to, to remove a lane on each side of University Boulevard because frankly, you don't need three lanes that are going up to Wheaton. It becomes a freeway. Um, so the idea is to claim that back as either a bus lane, a protected bike lane and/or sidewalks. So, or any combination of three, uh, to make it just safer to walk and then reduce the distance that you have to, to cross University Boulevard. So even some of those solutions could be done with temporary infrastructure, like placards and it's like the tactic, the ballards, yeah, like ballards. But the tactical urbanism stuff that we've been pursuing in the working group, um, so they're, he's open to that at least. So I think these are some things that we can emphasize. But if I could just add a little bit, so Stuart, I think you were really optimistic in your, um, in, in your report, but I think it's important to emphasize that the letter, in case you didn't read it, was also, I think, a way for us to express not only our frustration as a council, um, but also the town's frustration for the lack of inaction. I mean, we've, we have had regular meetings with SHA over the last five years, um, on many issues of which one of them was University Boulevard to making it safer. Uh, not just to talk about this idea of a road diet, but also, uh, high visibility crosswalks, narrowing lanes where, where appropriate, um, doing other measures that could be, um, improving the safety there. And there hasn't been a lot of action. So, um, I think it's been pretty frustrating.
I think having the timeline, having this, we discussed, this is what you guys were gonna move forward with, but you didn't, you know, I think it's really.
Yeah, as an annex, we concluded the timeline of these conversations that we've had and what they've, um, what we've discussed and what they have been promised along the way. So that, um, and other communications were attached, but I wanted to add also, I may, um, Councilmember Stuart and I, or Councilmember Sparkler and I, um, authored an opinion piece with Dan Langenkamp, um, who lost his wife to a bicycling accident in twenty twenty-two in Bethesda. Um, and now is fathering two children on his own. So he, the three of us wrote an opinion piece in Bethesda today. The time, it was actually, I think, pretty well timed.
Very well timed.
On the tail end of when that was released, when the letter was, um, transmitted to state highway administration. So that was published on Friday. And then, of course, we participated in the ride.
On Sunday.
Where, um, where I was gonna give an update, uh, later, later on, but maybe I'll, I can just do it now. To compliment what, uh, Councilmember Sparkler said, we rode, he and I rode from James Anderson's crash site on St. Paul and University Boulevard. And it was really.
Along with three other.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was really powerful because we just put it out there in the article that we were gonna do that. And a couple of community, community members showed up and rode with us. And Tracy showed up with the dogs. Thank you for, for being there. And much to our surprise, James's mother also showed up.
That was very.
To thank us and wish us, um, a good ride and.
Very emotional.
Yeah, it was, it was quite moving and, um, just to have her there and know that we were riding in his honor was, was really nice. And Dan gave us the space to speak in the, in the event too. So we were able to say some words. We're the last, you know, it went basically from like, uh, state level down to the very local level. So we were the last ones to speak and said some words, uh, to reflect some of the comments that we're making right now. Uh, so it was really a nice series of events. We didn't get to do the full ride ourselves because, uh, we had, he's here and I had a couple of other obligations that day related to our kids soccer games, but, um, but I, I think in the future it'd be really nice if we.
Dedicate the day.
Dedicate that day, moving forward to, to ride from that crash site and, and, and participate as a town council in some way and also as a community. I think that'd be really.
I mean, I think that event is sadly growing because I did hear it on the news that it had been, you know, they were having the event. So, yeah.
There were probably about three hundred at the rally to get off. And then I don't know how many others joined along the way. It was quite moving, yeah.
No, it was, um, it was good. It was good. Matt did, um, it's still part of the subject. Um, they were, a state highway was having trouble getting our emails. Do you know if that got worked out with?
They're still working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, we have not worked for the issues. The issue is actually on our end.
Okay.
Uh, our emails are going to their quarantine file, um, and the, um, National A Studio team is working with, uh, the State Office of Information Technology too.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think we finally got the right people together to talk. And so that was, um, that was a good connection. So hopefully we can get that. In the meantime, if you need to send anything, I'll send it to Nicole's personal email. And I don't want to overwhelm it. So just send it to me and I will forward it to her to tell her to send it to whoever needs to, to receive it. But hopefully that'll get worked out soon.
Do you want to mention the forum now too?
Sure. Yeah, no, I would go ahead and mention that as well.
Yeah, so last, last town council meeting, we had our state delegate, Jared Solomon here, talking about these issues and, um, what he's been doing in outreach with state highway administration and also with, um, some of the impacted families uh, in the communities. And we discussed that there would be, uh, a town forum or a community forum sometime in the coming weeks. And we have a date for that. And the idea is for public residents, community to express their, their feelings, their concerns, but also to come around a set of solutions that'll hopefully be proposed at that meeting from the state highway administration. So we can start the community dialogue on what makes sense to move forward with. Uh, and that'll be Newport Mill, uh, elementary.
Middle school.
Middle school, middle school on, on December seventeenth, I believe at seven PM.
Yes.
Yep, yep.
So we can make sure to note that in the minutes.
Yeah, when I saw Eden Durbin, um, the chief of staff for Jared, um, they're putting together a flyer. So they should have that soon. And, um, so, you know, that she has told me three times, it's December seventeenth. I like to see it in writing from them first to actually confirm it, but I feel confident that's when it's gonna be. Uh, and members of state high will, state highway will be there as well. So they're trying to work out that, uh, with the, with first. Good. But I do think the momentum is going to be pushing this. And, you know, sadly, some, you know, people have to lose their life to get that momentum going. But, um, that's, uh, that's a shame that we can't react faster. But so, anyway, any other?
Just two thoughts. One, um, for council members, Sparkler and Angle, when you rode down to Bethesda, as an observer on a bike, would you feel about safety and infrastructure, just, just getting down to Bethesda?
Should ask you, do her, because he, I, I ride that way all the time. So I've kind of become, I think, decent in time.
Said you hadn't been on a bike in a couple of years or something.
Can we strike this part from the record? I just want to just go on the record.
But he did really well.
I think, thanks, uh, you know, a middle-aged man trying to hustle it up the butt. It's a quick side. I left a little bit earlier than Councilmember Angle did and, and I was like, oh, I'm gonna get ahead of him. And he caught me and just zip right past.
Very, that's a very.
So I gotta get back on the bike. Anyway, that's, it's not relevant for the story. Um, actually, that was ironic that you mentioned that because we, we selected our route to be safe intentionally because we didn't want to be on Connecticut, you know, going down with all the traffic. So we ended up going Crosspliers Mill into Rock Creek Park and down that way and then in front of NIH along, uh, that way. But, you know, if you're a biker and you're thinking about, hey, what route do I want to go? Like this was the analysis that we did when we're trying to do a ride to be visible, to memorialize someone who was killed along that road. And it was almost like, you know, it was like, this is exactly why we need to be having this conversation. Um, so I, as we were riding, I was like, you know what? This is, we gotta, we gotta work on this. So, um, yeah, it was, we ended up going the back way. Seen it.
Well, you were, you were with some avid, at least four avid bike riders. So, I mean, the guy that was wearing the neon yellow, I think he suggested which way to go.
Yeah.
Through the Kengar and down. So.
Yeah.
They, they, they're, it's not their first rodeo.
I was glad to have the company.
Yeah. So.
And, and then the only other thing I would say to add on to, you know, my own thoughts, just for troop eight, like you see us here talking and communicating tonight. But if you get a chance on the back table, is a copy of the letter that we talked about? Because this is also how we communicate. And I want to acknowledge the hard work that went into this letter because it's not just a fluff letter. This is a very pointed letter to SHA of our frustrations because many of the projects that we outline in this are things that we have been working with SHA on for over seven years. Some of them finally just got implemented, but some of them have still not been implemented. And worse and more, maybe more frustrating is in this specific area of University Boulevard, there's many projects that we have pointedly brought to their attention, need improvements, that they have been studying and they have completed the study, but they haven't released the study. We've asked for it numerous times. We've met with them numerous times and we've gotten nothing back from them. And it's, it's very frustrating. But, you know, this is another way that we communicate very officially to them. But, you know, what I guess kids call, you know, we've got the receipts, right? Like everything that we work on, we document and we put into this timeline to bring forth that like, this isn't a one-time thing. This is years worth of, of items and events and meetings that aren't showing productivity. So if you get a chance, you know, on the way out, just, you know, pick it up and, and read it. Um, it's, you know, it's a very powerful way that we choose to communicate as a town, but it's a very good letter.
Yeah, it's, um, I mean, uh, we're not trying to tear down state highway. We have four state highways that run through our town. And when people ask us about traffic, it's like, well, we have to deal with state highway. So, you know, we get things approved and then you find out, you know, months later, well, how come it hasn't happened? Well, we don't have the funding. And you've gone, you know, years to get to that point. So hopefully one day, you know, some of the things we want will get funded. So like extending the queue at Metropolitan or Plyers Mill to turn, you know, left on Connecticut Avenue. So, uh, I think we do a good job communicating, um.
It is, it is frustrating.
But it is frustrating.
One of the very first projects that I came in and worked on was in twenty fourteen. And if you've been on Metropolitan Boulevard by the train station, it was to get those rapid flashing beacons. You push the button, they flash so you can safely cross the street. And they spent two years studying it, then gave us the report. And we pointed out that the way they studied it was the most ineffective way you can study pedestrian safety, which is not during rush hour and not during the mark travel times, when, and that's what people are walking to. Um, and we asked them to re-study it, which they did. And when they looked at the pedestrian flows, they're like, oh, yeah, this makes a lot of sense now. We should put in these beacons. But we have to send it to the Office of Transportation Safety, I think Traffic Safety, UTS, for their concurrence and approval. That took another year. And then UTS approved it. And then it needed money. And that took another two years. And it was seven years to get what, when you just go buy it, it just looks like, you know, a piece of tin on a, on a metal post. Took seven years to get that in. It is frustrating.
Well, I don't think anybody should do, put a sign in just because I say you should put a sign there, but there is something to studying. But when it is extended out for years, that gets to the ridiculous. But funding is an issue too.
Yeah.
It's, it's, Maryland is not a big state, but they're not funding just us. They are funding the entire state. So it is, um, it is tough. Alright, you guys done?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's go down to be Montgomery County Public Schools. We were into a letter writing.
Another good letter.
We did.
Good letter.
So there's another letter at the back. You can read this, applies to anybody that goes to Montgomery County Public Schools, but this was our updated letter from the round two data that came out around the Woodward Boundary Analysis. It was our way of looking at what had changed from round one to round two, where we felt some of the things we wrote in our first letter were captured with the updated round two maps, but also there are places where we still saw some voids and some, some issues that had not been addressed, questions of ours that had not been answered. Um, and we worked to review that with the county, uh, and, and send it back to MCPS as they were, uh, taking in feedback from the community, which is kind of through Thanksgiving. I can jump right into today's MML brief.
I would go ahead and.
Mayor and I, uh, as part of, we are one municipality amongst many municipalities in Montgomery County. And there is a group of municipalities that, that meet. And it just so happened that today we have the opportunity to confer with Dr. Taylor, the superintendent of Montgomery County Schools, and talk about a variety of issues. But one of them is what is happening with the boundary studies. So there's one in Crown in up county area, but specifically Woodward, which affects the Kensington area. Um, but it's not just the boundary studies anymore. There's the regional programming study that's going on. Um, and so with that, there's been also two new evolutions, which is for Crown, they're talking about not opening Crown immediately to the Crown population, but using it as a holding school. And now also Down County, um, in the Silver Spring area, the superintendent is asking them to go back and review the catchment area for the Silver Spring International Middle School, what they call Sims, because he's recommending the shuttering of that school, which is nearly a hundred years old, but which they are also in the midst of a thirty million dollar renovation to the gymnasium. There are some real shifting, um, uh, issues that are happening kind of in real time during this. So the, the biggest is, is like, we're, we're seeing population changes and a enrollment shrinking that the county has not seen ever in its tenure. So it, it still talks about itself as a hundred and sixty-five thousand students, but that was at its peak, which was six years ago. It's currently about one hundred and fifty-five thousand students and their projections show it being closer to a hundred and forty-eight thousand students in the next six years, mainly due to shrinking, uh, populate, you know, birth, yeah, birth rates. Um, the affordability, especially of housing, cause, you know, cost of housing and the lack of new housing that's coming online. And, uh, immigration, right? And immigration enforcement and, uh, those that are, are leaving the school district as a result of it. And so with that, they're seeing not just a shrinking enrollment, but that shrinking enrollment is very pointed into specific communities. And so with that new data, there will be a, yet a third round of maps that are coming out. So those maps will be released after Thanksgiving. I would imagine probably the Monday thereafter, that week after, um, in which they will show new possible, uh, catchment areas and articulation patterns as they have to adjust where there's, you know, there's still parts of the county that are growing in population, North Bethesda area, where there's some new housing and it's generating school age children populations. But then kind of the eastern part of the county in Silver Spring and Wheaton especially are losing enrollment. And so they have to figure out how to balance these lines. So expect new maps. Uh, they'll allow for about six weeks of feedback. So through November and December.
Apps will come out after Thanksgiving. They, they make the recommendation in February and vote in March.
Correct. So.
Don't change the timeline then.
No change the timeline because they have to implement in order to.
To do the.
Build the program and build the transportation and notify households.
Did they say anything about the regional programming models?
Yeah, I mean, they, he said quite a bit. I mean, really, they're, part of the reason for regional is, as he, they've said, is to try and get the programming into the localist level, but that they need to do it. It's a, it's supply and demand. No, they, they're moving, they're not slowing anything down.
They didn't delay it.
They did not. And they don't anticipate it because they need to understand what programs are going where into what regions of high schools in order to match the population supply into that.
Well, he said something, and remind me how, what it was regarding, but he said something about parents don't want to travel too far for their kids. There's like ninety-eight kids and eight hundred applications.
So there are not, yeah, there's on average about nine hundred applications to, to these specialty programs for ninety slots.
Yeah.
And of those not selected, every one of them is as qualified as the ones that were. So they are completely mismatched with supply and demand for those programs. But to the mayor's point, there's complete populations that are saying, we would like to do those programs, but they're just too far away in the county.
Yeah.
So that's why they're trying to bring it so that each one of those styles of programs, arts, communication, STEM, um, you know, theater, I said, arts, is, is it each one of those? Five, uh, high school cluster, or high school regions. So at most, right? If you're in the Wheaton, uh, Woodward, WJ, um, I forget the fourth high school. If you're in that, that region, you would have all those programs within that region. So the furthest you may have to go is one high school away geographically.
Did they say anything about, even if they're keeping the schedule, providing additional opportunities for input that is more substantive? That's one question. Um, the second question is, did anybody raise, um, uh, issues around, uh, resourcing and budget and making sure that even if you're establishing new programs, that they are adequate, adequately resourced?
Yes. I mean, that was something that was very interesting. He talked a lot about the funding levels. Um, I mean, he was very direct. Um, his comment is part of the problem that they're in today is because the county has not spent the type of money on a per pupil level as it needed to. It's spending less today than it did fifteen years.
I believe that.
When you adjust for inflation. And as a result, to be able to play for some of the programming and staffing and other operational budgetary activities over the last two decades, they've done it by not paying for the capital improvements.
Yeah, because the infrastructure is suffering and the, and the, but the cost is horrendous of what it costs. He said twenty-five million dollars to air, heat and air conditioning at high school.
If you have to replace the HVAC system in a high school, it's twenty-four million dollars.
Yeah.
But the problem is that their CIP budget has not adequately addressed issues for three decades. And that's why they have a five billion dollar ask in front of the county council. Um, he also expressed that it's gonna take, you know, two decades to fix this. This is not a quick fix issue. They are doing their best to get as much resourcing as they can to address specifically the capital improvement areas so that they can adequately put students. areas so that they can adequately put students in schools, not have schools close for, you know, heat, air conditioning mold, air quality, and then to your point, program and, and have the resources to put the right teachers in the right, you know, if it's lab work or theater or what on, in each one of those regions. That is, that's the goal. But he's got to first try and get as many of these schools back to.
So it sounds like
Yeah.
that's going to be a very tricky balancing act and they may have to prioritize capital improvements.
Yes.
At the expense of instructional.
He, he didn't say as directly, but yes, they are making a real capital improvements is kind of a number one. But that's also because the CIP budget is out right now and the operational budget comes out next month.
Yeah.
The, you know, but he made a big point that resource allocation is the number one job for MCPS, that they will, they have to look at their facilities that have been under invested and make decisions to invest in them now at the expense of other programming decisions.
He was pretty blunt too, that the, um, what you see in the next round is not what you saw in this round, on the second round. He was pretty blunt about that.
So the maps are going to change.
Yeah.
The other thing to the point of like not slowing down is he's like, once we settle this, we're coming right back with the elementary schools. That they have to be rebounderied as well. That was always part of the plan, but we wanted to get the middle school and high school alignment settled. And then when we look at populations and the feeding pattern, we will have to do yet another boundary for elementary schools. Whether that's next year, he didn't say, but it will, it is coming.
I understand, I understand his desire to go quickly to kind of identify, he's identified, obviously he's identified big problems. But how does he square that with like what he's using or what they are using as their factors that they're weighing? Like, did he talk about like, hey, you know, we, obviously we're, because we're writing letters. We're like saying, this is important to us, this is important to us. Has he, has he, did he acknowledge receipt of those letters and did he?
He, yeah, he had two very important things to say. One was, yes, they, yeah, they, they're, they acknowledge they're getting all of this contact. But he said, quality over quantity matters. So getting a hundred form letters or emails that all say the same thing, okay, that's great, but that it, that doesn't necessarily move the needle. A very thoughtful letter, whether from an individual, a student, uh, you know, a municipality that says, have you considered when you, you know, shift from this to that, what the, you know, that impact is on our community? What that impacted might be on, you know, mental health, what that impact might be on travel times, what? Those are the things that they want to hear. Those are the very impactful letters, which I think is what we drafted.
For sure.
Um.
You should have said, did you read our letter?
I got a copy right here. Um, to, um, the other point around I think that's more or less all of it.
But he didn't say, oh, we're weighing factor X.
No, no, he didn't say they, they have waited. That's going to come in his recommendation. That's what I was getting at. Um, but what he did say is what they have heard very loudly is about articulation patterns and trying to minimize split articulations and the importance of that for school communities, like the, you know, call it the KP community, but also municipal. But he acknowledged they have a mathematical problem. They have, you know, whatever was 40 high schools or 24 high schools, but 40 middle schools. That doesn't divide equally. And then a hundred and whatever, 23 elementary schools that feed that, like, you can't just say it's three elementaries to a middle and two middles to a high school. There's no clean way that it works. So there will be split articulations somewhere. What they are trying to look at is double split articulations where you split in elementary and in middle, uh, or from elementary to middle and from middle to high school, and they want to try and minimize those. Um, the other thing that he talked about more from the capital planning perspective was, um, when they build the regional model, they can also look at regionalizing other things that, uh, you know, other areas of cost, like transportation was his example. That other nearby school districts have done this very successfully that, you know, his example in transportation was we sometimes spend what they call deadhead miles. More miles are spent buses driving to go pick kids up than are actually driven in the route to take them to school. And that that is a waste from an environmental standpoint, from a cost standpoint, from cars, buses on the road standpoint. That when they build a regional model, they can service the regions, right? Whether it's, you know, meals, whether it's buses, whether it's programming, they can do it region by region by region and set certain assets forward deployed into those regions, but they can't do that currently.
Will they also be able to declare snow days differently by region?
I wish that was asked, but no, I don't, you know.
Bullsville region.
We'll put that in the, we'll amend the letter.
Next letter, another chance to do a letter.
I'm sure.
Um, he did, uh, he used the Fairfax model as
Wasn't gonna say it.
Yeah, well, he called it the F word.
Yes. Fairfax is the one that regionalizes and they've done it very successfully and they've done it
They've done a good job.
For close to 20 years. So it's not like they just started and they've got a lot of data on how it's been effective, both efficient and cost effective. Um, you know, and, you know, because some of the things like, we've got a number of buses that are now electric buses. So, you know, charging stations were set in the bus depots, but like, you know, the, some of those kind of infrastructure decisions will have to be made once they get to a regional model. Point for us is there will be yet another round of maps. Um, he, there was a kind of situation that lines are changing and he acknowledged that Kensington is in the crossroads of because of our proximity to three different regions and multiple high schools. And so, uh, when we get that, we'll review it and then give another thoughtful letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the reading.
Any questions? You see any hands? Okay. All right, let's move on to C, or number two. Okay, uh, audit committee report. Matt, do you want to just mention?
Just want to acknowledge that we received the audit committee's report for this year in June 30th, 2025. Um, we held a meeting that included council members, uh, Sparker and council members Crimmins, uh, to review the audit. It is online, it is available to the public for review. Um, and there were no consultants. And the report is in the, the public packets.
Okay, council, any other questions regarding the audit?
Just an acknowledgement of, um, our audit committee members. Uh, so Jeff Capron, Leslie Olson and Carrie Thompson, who had just amazing questions of our auditors, which led to, you know, um, a couple of other points being addressed just for future audits, but biggest takeaway for me is that the town continues to be in exceptionally good financial standing. So.
Yeah, I just recommend, also recognize our folks on our town staff did a really nice job keeping that together. They, they, the, the auditors were very complimentary of our town staff in that meeting and, and the hard work they do. So thanks for all that. Really appreciate it.
Any questions from the audience?
Yes, can read the audit too.
Very differently.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, all right. Uh, next item on the agenda, number three, the Explorer Kensington Antique Road Sign on Howard Avenue. Um, council, you have in your packet and we will take questions from the audience or comments. But, um, you were, Anne and I and staff sat down with Kenzie Rollins, a designer. And we came up with the attached. And, uh, we added in different color choices. One was, uh, black and one was green. We are, um, a lot of the black now is the, the black poles are being used on our stop signs, uh, on the current, um, historic signs, uh, the, uh, business, historic business, historic business district signs. And, uh, so uh, we went ahead and added that one as well. And then green lettering or white lettering. Um, I know, uh, there might be people in the audience who would like to address it if they want to take the opportunity to come forward. This is a good time. Yeah, and just give your name and.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Goldsboro. I have a shop on Kensington Antique Row, been there for 20 years. Um, and I am the chief cook and bottle washer as a volunteer for the Kensington Antique Row Merchants Association. We, our, our mission is to market Kensington Antique Row and the members and the people that aren't members, uh, to draw traffic to the retail area. We sponsor KensingtonAntiqueRow.com, the website that gets a lot of traffic. We do print advertising with the Regional Antique Week Guide and with the Regional Multi-State Sunday Driver Brochures that are distributed by their publishers. Um, all the members here, I think, except, um, council member Sparker, who I haven't met before, heard my presentation a couple of years ago when this all started, advocating strongly for the maintenance of the existing Antique Row sign because it is an A plus example of outdoor advertising. Huge, single message, 10 characters, destination. People drive up Connecticut Avenue and their car automatically turns. Um, I can say
Or sit there for hours depending on the traffic.
And that's right. And they're nice places to eat.
Yes.
Nice places to shop and they can park for free, which is a wonderful, uh, advantage on Kensington. Um, so I argued passionately a couple of years ago and have followed up a number of times with videos for you all about customers who come in and say, oh yeah, I, I never seen it all before, but I saw that sign. Um, at any rate, so you've all seen that, um, I've get a copy of that to the new council member. Um, but I was, um, pleased to see the examples that came in the agenda yesterday. Um, Antique Row is still there. It's not as grand as it was before, but it's still there and it's part of the key message. So for that, we are grateful. I sent this message out today to our membership and Lord bless us. I actually had some feedback. Um, that usually happen, uh, but, uh, I had four or five people write to express their strong preference for the, um, yellow on green.
Okay, same color that we've had before.
And it would be, it would be diminishing a brand that has long been established. And I think it would be foolhardy to change that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, if I can just take another aside to say thank you for other things.
Sure. I love thank you.
This spring, the, the flower baskets on Antique Row were great. Thank you. I know largely town staff operation. I know you planted them and watered them and they made the place look so much better.
They did.
Um, and I'm assuming those will be a part of the plan next year for the
Public Works can't wait.
Public Works can't wait. And we've got the Maryland House and Garden Pilgrimage running on June 7th.
Yes.
So we really need to be gussied up for that.
Absolutely.
And so if I can embed a little plea, um, could we spend some time and effort and money on the, um, planting beds within the brick wall along the railroad?
Yeah.
It's been a little scroungy for a couple of years.
They don't get the sun they used to get for the sunflowers that were planted in there. So we need a little bit, yeah.
Shade loving.
Yes, and yeah. Public Works will love that.
That would be really great. I'm working with, um, fellow shop owners and talking as I can to some of the property owners along Antique Row, asking them if they will engage in a best foot forward, let's spruce up for this spring. Because Kensington really is going to be in the spotlight for the Maryland House and Garden Pilgrimage, which is a huge big deal.
It is.
That not everybody knows about.
Well.
And, and it's up to us to publicize it so that they
Absolutely.
So thank you for these things and, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Great. Thank you, Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret.
At the Home and Garden Tour is in June. Um, I haven't put that on your list yet, but it's the first, the seventh, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, Sunday.
On my list.
Yeah. So, uh, if you haven't bought your tickets, buy tickets.
They're available.
Yeah, you are. Okay. Well, now, yes, they are. I think I was the first woman to buy tickets because I was told by eight, I went to buy tickets, what a light of death. So, uh, no, it's going to be great. And I think your house is on the, yeah, your house is on the tour.
Got you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why it's on my calendar.
Yeah. And a lot ahead, a lot yard.
You want a service project?
I don't know if you saw Aryn's, uh, did you see Aryn's thing in the, on the listener about moving concrete? And it is uphill. My gosh, she's making that sound really attractive.
50 to 100 to 300 pounds.
300 pounds uphill. So it was, but you don't have those in the backyard.
No.
All right. So, uh, council, you have before you, uh, I just, what your preferences are. Uh, we have, um,
Can we hear from the committee that?
The committee. Committee. Illustrious committee. Well, no, no, it's, uh, I mean, I, I'm keen to the green. I do, I understand, uh, you know, the black. I mean, part of the reason to go with the black on some of these poles is because they don't fade. They don't fade as much as the, the green, but I think especially the, um, the Explore Kensington and the Unique Shopping, these will be added, you know, new, the, everything else will be refurbished. So those pieces will be new and I think they're going to be aluminum probably. And then they're not going to fade because the historic signs, the, um, the Kensington Historic Business District signs have not faded and they've been up for quite a while. So, uh, probably about eight years. So I think those, I think the aluminum is not going to, uh, to fade and the poles aren't going to be that hard to.
And then that's maintenance. That's that goes that is.
Yes. So, um, I, I think that's what you and I have been leaning towards, right?
I'm partial to the green and the yellow.
Yeah.
Um, for similar reasons as Margaret identified, just I feel like it's very much identified with our town. And I like the consistency with the other signs along the entry points to the town.
Yeah, for me and I were just looking at that, that cohesiveness of the color scheme.
I mean, the other, the, the alternative would be to go with the white lettering and the green, but I, I do like the yellow. I mean, whether yellow's a favorite color or not, it is, it is our town colors. I know, I've, I've.
There's white in there too, Margaret.
This is not the toughest boat you'll ever make.
Yeah.
I mean, but for the same reasons, the, these are our town colors, the green and the yellow. Um, but to council member Litter's point, looking at the other signs on Google Maps of our, our entry point signs, that's what we do.
Yeah, they're gray and yellow.
Green and yellow. And that, I think we want to keep that cohesive, um, brand, uh, in color scheme. So. So this one has a green, the yellow at the top and then a white lettering.
Yeah, I mean, I think on the other signs, the white is better, they're smaller. This is enormous.
And I think for the other wayfinding signs, they are more reflective when light, you know, headlights hit them. So for ease of navigation.
Yeah.
But these are, you know, to Margaret's point, you know, this sign's good from a country mile. So.
And we are going to, uh, I think I said this in the email that I sent out earlier, we are going to do one for the West Howard. But, uh, Carrie Anne's going to do that. She's just been overwhelmed with Maryland Home and Garden Pilgrimage things. And that's a much easier sign, but we'll bring that forward too when we're probably in January. That won't be, it's just a square.
Setting aside the fact that these are Green Bay Packer colors. I mean, no.
You got your win.
I noticed on the map here on Google Maps that we have, we usually are hanging things from, from some of the, the ironwork.
We do hang them from the iron.
Yeah. Does this, we, can we put like little hooks on here?
Yeah, I think that would be something to do rather than trying to, uh,
Band it.
Yeah, Jerry. We try to put the same size banner. We have a banner size that we tell people to do their banners on, but some are not put on as well as they should be.
Yeah, the one that's on the Google Maps is like a little saggy.
Yeah, that's, I don't want to, that's kind of an installer error.
Understood.
But I don't want to be too.
Was it Alex?
Yeah, Alex did.
Um, yeah, I agree. I think, I think the green and gold, green and yellow is, is very sharp.
Yeah, we don't do gold here.
Yeah. Green and yellow, sharp.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I can support it.
Okay, good. Everybody likes green and yellow. It's fine. Oh, I'm hearing. Okay, good. Uh, well, we'll approve the, uh, resolution to move forward with the refurbishment. Well, I didn't, we'll get to that one. I said we'll move forward to that later, but thank you. Uh, does anybody else have any questions? I'm not seeing any answer. We'll just move on. All right, um, from the town manager, these are some of the items that we had quickly discussed at, um, our last work session. So Matt's just going to highlight some of these items and council, if you have, want to add to it, please.
Go through these very quickly, so if you have any questions.
I'm gonna go through these very quickly, so if you have any questions, just ask me. Um, ECTGM is the uh, existing. Legal case of, with regards to the Bakers Convention Building and, and four oh one Connecticut Avenue versus the town with regards to a covenant issue. Um, they have set uh, the, the date for the um, trial, the last week of June. And we're currently working with our town attorney and our outside counsel. Um, Lady Ellis through discovery, um, we'll provide updates as we can throughout the year. Uh, one oh four five fifteen Montgomery Avenue, this is the M T drive-through property. Uh, we have a signed agreement to acquire the property. We're planning to close on December eighteenth. Uh, M T Bank has required our ten percent deposit, so we provided them with ninety-three thousand dollars. Once we close on the property after December eighteenth, we'll file with the state to get the two bond bills for reimbursement of eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I'd also like to note, um, they're planning to hold their ribbon cutting on January eighth. Uh, council member Sparker already responded, said he will be there. If you're interested in attending, please let us know. Uh, you will RSVP with Emilio. Okay, they, um, they have very limited space, so they want to figure out who from the town's going to be there before they reach out to other.
I think the council and then I would definitely add Kate Stewart to that.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
We, we reached out to Paul Ellis.
Okay.
We got her on the list. It is from four to six. It is a Thursday, January, there's a Thursday.
They're planning a snowstorm, so just. Yeah, I would just do those and then let them figure out who else they would like.
Yeah, just send us an email. We'll send it over to Emilio.
Okay, you're gonna send him an email?
I will send him one email, just.
Okay, with all of us on there plus Kate.
Okay.
Okay.
They, do they have a date for their soft opening?
They do. Uh, it is uh.
It's the seventh. The seventh, Monday the seventh. They're closing half day on Friday the fifth.
Over here in town.
Eight, eight, Monday the. Yeah, the eighth. So it's a half day on the fifth. They won't be open on the Saturday at all for, in, at either location. And then they, um, and then they'll open Sunday, or excuse me, Monday. Um, I did ask them, you know, because our event for Light Up K Town is December fifth, the same night. So they're not really taking, they're not taking any furniture. They're just. The blink truck, break truck, brink, brink truck will come by, pick up the money and that's pretty much. All they're doing, computers and things like that, you know, will be taken, but otherwise they're leaving all the furniture. They're not taking a lot of stuff, so they won't be moving while we're trying to have Light Up K Town.
That's correct.
Okay, good, good catch.
Yes, so anyway, so, yeah, and the building will go up for sale at some point after we move up. That's what, they were pretty firm. Doesn't go up for sale till we physically move.
Question?
Yes.
Are there constraints on what can happen with that property?
Uh, you, you should come to the, but I'll repeat, there was a question about constraints on the property for sale. There really isn't. There's some constraints on what you could um. Tearing it down and building it higher, things like that. There are some, because it is A in the historic district. There currently is what, a fifty-five?
Forty-five.
Forty-five foot limit. Of course, if they were to tear it down and put in housing, they could get an extension on that, but. I, I have a feeling that whoever buys it's just gonna take the building and renovate it. That would be my guess. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, number three, uh, Kensington Crossing HOA. So this is uh, part of parcel A, which is located west of Silver Creek. Uh, between Flyers Road and Oberon Street. Uh, this is the property of the town identified that we'd like to acquire to basically become the new Joseph Park. Uh, we have a draft contract for sale. Uh, this was in the council packet. Uh, specifically, uh, page nine of the draft, article seven. These are the additional obligations that we have provided to the HOA, uh, what we're planning to do. Um, as long as council's okay with uh, A through E. If you're, if you're okay with that, just let us know and we will move forward and present this to uh, Deacon McGovern and the HOA. For tomorrow, uh, and then they will take a formal vote. And then assuming, let's have a verbal understanding that they're supportive of this, uh, then we'll be able to proceed with the process. It's page nine, um, article seven.
And mayor, if I might, this will be contingent, this will be contingent on adoption of an ordinance also. To proceed with the sale, um, the purchase.
Right.
So um, we're just clarifying right now, we're planning staff. There was uh, possibly that we might have to go through a, an amendment of the existing site plan from nineteen ninety. Um, legal staff with planning is currently reviewing that. They have not formally responded, but they believe that we may not have to go through that amendment process. Because the property would remain in public use by the town. Um, as for reference, we're planning to make this property a garden park. Uh, somewhat similar to on Kennedy Park, uh, it will be handed over to the Greenscape Committee for Design. Um, in future.
Okay.
Uh, the sale price is for forty-five thousand dollars. Um, and then the town is agreeing to pay any, uh, any costs associated with the amendment. Um, subdividing the property out from parcel A. Um, and uh, anything related to, if we ended up having to do a, a uh, phase one assessment, environmental assessment or anything. Where's the property?
I have a quick question for. Point E in section seven one, why does it say if requested the town? And weren't we requested already?
They had made a, a request of us to make improvements to the bridge. It was outside the port of limbs of the town, so we know the jurisdiction is not ours, it's M C D O Ts.
Yeah.
So if they come back and just ask.
Like a formal request.
Yeah, well, yeah, we, we don't have any staff, doesn't have any objections to that. So the county will do their biannual review of the, of the bridge. And if they ever make improvements, we'll just have a letter on file that says, you know, can you make some aesthetic improvements to that bridge?
I mean, my guess is it doesn't meet today's regulations either. So uh, they're, they probably need to be replaced, but it doesn't hurt to.
Yeah.
You know, to ask for that upgrade at some point.
Is it standard for us to include members of? The community in.
This was a request on behalf of the HOA to be involved in the design of the park.
Yeah.
So uh, we told them that we would, two members of the HOA board could join the Greenscape Committee. Um, kind of to help with the designs.
Okay.
So.
Is that something we've done in the past?
Uh, had people uh, who don't live in the town to be on.
I mean, I think it's an, an appropriate.
Yeah.
Um, collaboration.
Uh, part of the, this property is in the town that they currently, and actually. One and a half of the townhouses are actually in corporate limits of the town too.
Oh.
So, um, you're technically.
The half a person can.
Yes, although they do not, eh, it's just a way they.
Yeah.
A lot of them.
Yeah.
And I don't think, they don't pay our taxes though.
They do not.
Yeah.
No, we, um, currently they are responsible through their property management firm to maintain this property. Obviously, we would absorb it. We would absorb uh, maintenance of the sidewalk up to the property women of the town, which is where the bridge is. And then they would be required to maintain the sidewalk from the bridge to the existing.
I think I actually asked that, just why? I guess where it appears, why is it in the obligations of the purchaser and not the seller part?
We wanted to just make sure that, they asked about if we would continue to maintain that sidewalk. Uh, because their property man- management agreement. Um, shovels the snow on that sidewalk and the property, so.
Okay, it just seems strange that it's not our obligation, it's theirs and it's, there's another section devoted to their obligations, so. It's okay to be in there legally.
Well, our lawyer read it.
Yeah, to all.
Right.
An odd question that is related, but we haven't really gotten to that point yet. Would we move our town sign once this property is acquired? Just further, you know, just further east. I don't, if we want to, I'm just.
I mean, it certainly could be considered, but it's not really a line in which you.
So I will say that, and, and Mayor Ferg knows this, through conversation, this is going to be a long process to actually go through the phases to acquire the land. Uh, but once we have a contract for sale and agreement, um, I mean, I guess it's really just us working with the HOA to start moving forward with improvements. Prior to anything else that we do, we do have, um, we will have to separate the property out from the parcel. Um, we might have to go through an amendment of the site plan potentially. Uh, and then we have a uh, mandatory referral process for this.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, and you know, maybe the town's sign and future park signage into the Greenscape Committee for recommendation. Okay.
Any other questions? Do you, do you need a vote or just a?
Motion's fine.
Just a motion.
We'll, we'll go ahead and present this to Deacon and the HOA, and then if they have any feedback or comments, um, we'll bring them back. But we anticipate that we'll be happy with this based on prior conversations and um. Hopefully bring it forward quickly.
Okay, any comments from the audience? Uh, Suellen?
It's a little difficult to hear, but uh, you will, you will need to take a vote on this eventually. Right now, it's in the draft form. So it can come back to you once it's final, but you will need to approve it formally.
Do, do you want a consensus or a motion for just sending the draft?
No, that's okay because, um, I think it's al- already clear that Matt is authorized to try to negotiate this. But it does have to come back to you for approval of the contract of sale and then also again as an ordinance. But you will have to approve the final contract of sale.
Okay, but I do feel there's a consensus that we are.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Proceed.
Okay. Good, alright, thank you.
Thank you, council. Uh, I would like to. We are planning to mill and pave Hadley to the base of Washington Street this week. Uh, the, the milling and paving should be completed before Thanksgiving. There's some rain in the next few days that might shift that a little bit.
It's raining today?
Yeah, we'll also uh, mill and pave the intersection of Littledale and St. Paul prior to Thanksgiving as well. Uh, some temporary lines will be put down before we can get the thermo in, but that should be completed. We're holding off on Carol. Place right now, uh, we continue to have some issues with the existing sewer line issues with W S S C. Um, and there is a concern with the existing storm drain. Um, there are some lateral pipes that we found on the CCTV. Which have caused us some, caused us some concerns, so we're holding off. Uh, we'd like to evaluate that a little more. Uh, there's an eight inch PVC pipe that we believe is coming from a private residence, you know, short. And there's a four inch pipe that um, we don't know where it goes, although we believe it's connected to. An abandoned pipe that goes all the way up to Baltimore Armory, so we have to figure some things out.
Yeah, and these are on private property, so.
And there's no reason.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're trying to figure some things out. Um, so we'll, we'll kind of figure out what's going on. We're definitely gonna camera that four inch line and see where it goes. We have a pretty good idea. We know what it is. Uh, we just want to confirm, um, and then we'll be working with town attorney Ferguson to get some easements to fix some of these problems.
Okay.
Said eight inch PVC from a private residence?
We believe it is a grounded down spout from a property.
Hmm.
Uh, so. Uh, we're, we're learning some things that the town did. Um, it's recently, two thousand and five, they were surprised.
Probably.
You said Littledale, I thought I heard St. Paul, you mean Kensington Department.
Yeah.
My whole world is St. Paul. My whole life is St. Paul, yeah.
We have removed uh, eight trees along St. Paul Street. Uh, and we removed three trees along Decatur. Uh, the stumps have been ground out. Uh, we are planning to start the new storm drain project in a matter of weeks. Um, this will add a storm drain between University and McComas. We've been in communication with M C D O T. Um, in addition to the uh, Green Street project. They were a Greenway project for McComas, uh, so uh, their engineers aware that we're about to start as they are in their project. Uh, we held a community meeting two weeks ago with residents. We had three, three residents show up. It was very informative. And asked some very good questions, uh, so we are ready to.
And I don't think we had any panicky calls regarding the trees coming down.
The county did.
The counties.
Uh, we addressed those with M C D O T and uh, uh, county council president Stewart's office.
Okay, good.
There's a couple of comments on Wistorf too about the trees, so.
Yeah, but not panicky, just more what was going on.
Nostalgic.
Yeah.
So everything will be replanted after the project. Uh, we have a D and R permit on file to remove the trees, obviously. Um, and then we have a minimum of a one-to-one ratio replacement. We'll try to plant more. Basically, once the storm brings in, we'll have a better idea what we're working with. Um, and. I, I don't think, you know, talking to Alex and, and Jack, our contractor, it's probably going to be next winter that we replant the trees. I think we're gonna miss it this year.
Yeah.
Uh, we try not to plant past February, March. Um, and I don't think we're gonna hit that.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I mean, we're just, we're working on the phase one for M and T Bank. I mean, I don't want to get into that, uh, but there potentially could be. A gas tank, uh, associated with M and T Bank in the towns right away. Uh, we'll find out next week.
Yeah, this is under, uh. Howard Avenue or Montgomery Avenue.
A market between nineteen eleven and nineteen fifty-nine on the property, uh, the mapping, historical mapping shows that there's filling station. The filling station is located within our right of way. Uh, we have to determine if there's an actual tank still there, so.
Which side are you talking about? On the parking lot side or the?
M and T Bank.
Oh, right. Yeah.
So uh, they're gonna check next week if there's a tank still there. Uh, if there is a tank, we'll have to move to a phase two.
Yeah, uh, we're gonna do the seven year plan. Anyway, let's see what we got first then, because we just resurfaced the road. So.
It's not even dry.
I know, anything else?
I think that's.
Okay, I do want to uh, hear from the council. I know we had so much hearing from the council earlier and then I know you might have other things you want to bring up about some of your committee meetings. Do, do you want to have anything else? Did you cover everything, Stuart?
Well, I can all the, um.
Let's not.
No.
These kids need to get to bed.
The uh, couple of things, uh, Matt, we, I talked to Alex right before the meeting about our, our I R F P.
We have it, yes.
You have that, so that's good. We have, the drafts are submitted with the town staff and we're just gonna be sending that out here, I think, soon.
Hopefully this week. We're, we're, we're behind, as you know.
Yeah, it's okay.
Um, so hopefully this week, we should be reading it out by Friday. We have some targeted firms that we've worked with in the past, specifically with the BIPAP prehens. Um, that, that we'd like to send it to and hopefully get some feedback from them.
This is for the parking study.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just as a, just a general question, do you put the town council on like a B C C when that goes or?
Now, we'll just send it out to them. Communication will come directly through me.
Okay.
Uh, and then once we get them back, we'll distribute them back to the parking committee.
Okay, great, great.
Yeah.
So, are you, are you good with that?
Yeah, no, just, um, do you feel like you have enough firms on the list? I know we got a couple of names.
So any engineering firm that has a traffic uh, division and we will send to that we've worked with in the past. So that includes everything from uh, Farron Peers, who we have a pretty good relationship to even Brutus. These are in-house, kind of near firm. Um, hopefully we get some feedback because there's uh, some questions in there of whether we're in the right track and kind of go from there and see, see where we're at.
If you need more names, I'm sure we could also pull the M T C P B A S because there's some traffic engineer expertise on that.
And um, there's also um, some connections with the state highway that we can reach out to for other things, so.
That's great.
I think Nate, if you could, and Stuart, check with the P B A S M T C committee.
Yeah. There are two partic- two members in particular, Stuart, I'll work with you to.
Okay.
Reach out to.
And then I think I shared with you the name of the firm recommended by. Uh, it was Kenley Warren, maybe, by uh, Montgomery County's contact Benjamin Morgan. Yeah, so if we need more specific contact info for that, we'll be now.
So you need that by Friday? If you're gonna send it out Friday? You want to send it all out at the same time? So they all get equal time, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, got it. Alright, I'll coordinate with, I'll start sending emails to you guys after this meeting and we can get that done.
Is, does that give you enough time?
Yeah, I, I mean, well, it depends on the, if the P B A S folks are pretty responsive, I think, um, I don't know, I don't know who the two you're thinking about, but. I think we could probably, we should be able to shake it, shake them down, let's say Tuesday, or Friday?
Today's, yeah, well, you know, next week is Thanksgiving.
Indeed.
Yeah, so you know, you want to get it out, not the Wednesday before Thanksgiving for sure, so.
Yeah, I think we can do it by Friday. We'll let you know. You know, what we got.
And this is not the final R.
No, I know. It, it's just more of.
Yeah, no, I agree. We're hitting the holidays.
Yeah, yes. Okay.
Yeah. Um, okay, so there's that update. The next update for me is just a Walktober update, um. Thanks, everybody, for participating in Walktober. I got one response to our uh, survey question. It came from our esteemed mayor, um, so thank you for sending that in.
Wow.
I wanna just clear that with the council to make sure they're okay with that kind of arrangement, um, so.
Mint's ice cream?
Something, something for sending me.
The Maryland Home.
For the home tickets.
You already bought your ticket. I already have my ticket. You could donate it to somebody.
Okay, alright.
Have that.
So we, I would love to.
Donate it to somebody.
Um, so we did get one of those, we, you know, I just want to say thanks to everybody who worked on that to make that happen. Um, so we did get one of those, we, you know, I just wanna say thanks to everybody who worked on that to make that happen, and I think. We, we have some lessons learned, uh, to try to start to tackle that a little bit earlier and ways to kind of think we wanna improve or iterate on. On that event, so, um, it also came on the heels of, you know, some tragedy in the town, so, uh. You know, it wasn't the best of uh, times to be broadcasting pedestrian safety, but sometimes that's exactly when you need to broadcast.
Did you know things were great, I mean, I just, I really, wow, I really, yeah, I learned that, I didn't quite know to do. Follow the path.
Right.
But, you know, every time I see one, I stopped and re- rev it.
That's great, that's great. Um, so yeah, we'll, 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 we'll improve that next year and I think we'll, you know.
And I think we have all the signs, we did save them.
Oh, you did, okay, great, yeah, there were, there should have been twenty two, I think.
Yeah, I didn't count them, but I know we collected quite a few of them.
Okay, great.
I'll check, see if it's twenty two, so.
Okay, yeah, that's it for me.
Great, and? Um, alright, so I was just thinking on the parking committee, there are a couple of other things, maybe we could check with town staff on. Um, one is, and I'm unfortunately, I can't get. Fast enough connection to pull it up on my laptop, but we did work with Alex and a, a ta- parking task force member to update the map. That shows how to direct, you know, visitors in the town to our public parking lots and try to get people. Um, using the lots that exist instead of overcrowding some of our residential streets, and I just wanted to check to see if we. Know if that's gone up and if. Okay, okay, that's okay, and then related to that, there was also discussion around the November first baby cat. Um, event and I was not here that day, so I don't know how it. The Halloween, yeah, yeah.
And it's their anniversary.
Yeah.
Uh, so the only thing I know that some tickets were.
Yeah. Eight tickets were issued, okay. Wasn't that bad.
We brought our enforcement officer to work Saturday to monitor the event, um. The only feedback I remember getting is that, because it's a, the events the entire day, there, I don't think there was a time that it was overwhelming. The tickets were all for people illegally parked, obviously, so.
Yeah, I mean, I went around fourish and it was not dead, but it was not. Wasn't crazy.
We don't have any comments, so the main areas are, are Kensington Parkway, we didn't receive any comments from any of the residents on Kensington Parkway, so I'm assuming that the event went well enough.
Okay.
So.
Okay, yeah, alright, well, thank you, um, and the parking task force can get a more. In-depth report from Annie, but I thought since we were here, it'd be good to hear, um, before we get too much further out. Yeah, so thanks for your support on that, um. Otherwise, on the Greenscape Committee, um, the Ernest Memorial, oh, go ahead.
I did want to update, you go first, please, yes.
On what?
I wanted to update, I forgot to mention that in my updates. Are talking to Jack, our contractor.
Yeah.
He is looking at doing the improvements in January, February.
Thank you all. Thank you guys, thank you so much for coming.
Read your letters.
I know. I can see Alex better.
No, we're just empty.
Uh, we're looking at January and February to make the improvements with the walkway and everything.
Okay.
Uh, it's a good time for his concrete team. To move over there and they do that, um, we.
In January, February?
January, February, um. They, Jack has ordered the pavers. Um, there is a. Tracy, I don't, I don't have a picture, the design.
Oh, well, it's just the pavers, but they're brick that hold them together. Okay, okay.
Yeah, we have, we have the samples.
There's bricks along the sides that just keep the pavers in.
So we're looking at January, February, um. And we found a local uh, company that will remove and install the new flag. Posts.
Yeah.
Which wa- was something that Jack's team was not comfortable doing.
Yeah, how about the lighting, did you get somebody yet?
Uh, we have someone for the lighting.
Good.
We're just figuring that out.
Okay.
So, January, February, it should be.
Okay, and then that means planting in the spring, hopefully early enough that it can look decent by June. By June. Definitely won't look nice by June. Okay, um, always get flowers if you. Thank you for that update, and I'd be happy to come by your office and pick up samples, yeah. Um, but we did the last set of Greenscape Committee members that hadn't seen the plans yet, that had a chance to look at them and are happy with the direction it's going. Yeah, we also did Clum Kennedy. Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, we met at Clum Kennedy to do and we, you know, let it sit for a while. And weren't happy with some of the things, so, um, they're coming December, when did you say, um, Debbie said they were coming short to do some planting?
Send me the date, I don't remember, it was in December, that's all I remember.
Okay, it's, it's early December, they'll be doing some, we're trying to cover up the power. Uh, box that's there and weren't happy with what came in, so they're redoing that area and plus doing a little extra things and then. Uh, we're gonna put in some more rocks, uh, where the fern garden is, which is adjacent to the county property. And then, um, they all agreed that one of the sway swings we could put back there as well, so. Um, if Matt's writing down orders, sway swings. Cause that takes a little bit longer, so we're gonna put one back there as well. Apparently, there's a line, according to Gloria, there's lines to get on the sway swings, so she wants. She makes me have another one for the grandchildren. But they've been very popular, the one at Flynn is popular, the one at Reinhardt is pop, you always see somebody sitting in the sway swing, so. Um, so those, so that part two will look nice on. Uh, for the home and garden tour. Yeah, so we're cooking along. Um, so only two other brief things, um, well, one, this is, you might have more to add, but for sustainable Kensington. Um, you know, we continue to work towards documenting, um, our efforts for certification, but more. Immediately, we are working with town staff to get information on the food waste tonnage reports. So we can see how we're doing so far, it looks like the initial reports are not very high. Um, I think it was four thousand pounds.
About five thousand pounds a month.
About five thousand pounds a month, which is.
Which is not great. But it's new, it's new, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, Nate and I are hoping to meet with, um, Matt and Alex this Friday morning, if that works still.
Do you mean, okay, I think so.
You suggested the time, you're like, what? I just wanted to let folks know, so, um, we are planning to gather more information and data and then. Engage the Sustainable Kensington Committee to do more education outreach and conversation. With residents to understand, um. What the barriers are, what the opportunities are to increase participation, I know there has been some conversation. Conversation with us sir, regarding the bags and where to get the bags and whether you use the bags or not, I mean, I think everybody has to. Build kind of their own routine, there's no. One way. One way is right and one way is wrong, I know, um, I know people that put their waste in the freezer, that's what they do in the bowl. Freezer, so, you know, I think we all have to find our way, but I think the. What people need to understand is this is eventually going to happen anyway through the county. So, get used to it. Well, and it, as you have noted multiple times before, when the town transitioned to recycling, it was. Uh, not an overnight process to change behavior. Um, one of the things we wanna look at is our trash and waste uh, tonnage reports to see if there's a difference. People didn't like the bigger containers, that was, I think, the hardest part was bringing in the big, the big toders.
We were asking people to basically take things that were separated and put it in a toter, and that was a very challenging time.
Yeah.
You're, this, we're asking them to change their complete norms, I mean, they're changing their complete behaviors, so it's gonna take some time.
I mean, food is definitely a little bit more challenging than a, than a paper box, a cardboard box, but. It's, it's doable. Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to share that, an active conversation and we welcome ideas. Good.
A couple of just questions, um. What were the pounds per month under the old, under, do we ever get the tonnage report from?
Yeah, uh, so we averaged about four thousand pounds from compost crew.
Okay.
We're getting five thousand right now through, uh, our food waste collection program.
But the compost crew bin, has that gone down or we still have similar, yeah? So it's a.
Yeah.
Plus.
And I think people are replacing other things other than just food scraps in there, I think they're, you know, because it's full composting as opposed to our food collection, I think there's things going in there. People put their walnuts in there from their trees.
Oh, some yard waste.
Uh, we know people are bringing their walnuts over from their walnut trees and putting them in the bins, so I don't know if that's just.
Is that okay?
They're taking it, whether.
Well, that's like anything else, they take it, cause we.
Compost crew has not said anything to us.
Yeah.
Um. So.
Okay, you had another question?
I'm just taking through that one. I mean, I know it's not a one for one because it's food waste versus compost and the things we had under compost crew. Can't all go in, but. You know, we're still up tonnage wise, but maybe not number of households wise from. Uh, compost.
We're, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna, we're thinking through doing some door to door.
Okay.
Advocacy and listening and, uh, that's part of the conversation later this week. But I think Anne's point, which may have been missed, I think, because I think you asked another question about the bins, is that getting the reports on the trash. Numbers, to see if they, if they go down, I, you know, I think they will.
It's, it's, like I said, it's been very light, uh, I mean, we're four months in.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's gonna take some time, uh, there's been. There's been some good feedback, I think, on Kensington, for what people are doing, and I think we need to highlight that.
Yeah.
Using a smaller bin on your kitchen counter with a smaller bag and putting that into.
The caddy works great.
Better solutions.
I started doing that this week, after I read about it on the list, no, I have the caddy, but using the smaller bag. And just putting the small bag in there, like you do.
Like, um, like for example, I mean, I know this is a personal thing, but I have a recycling bin in my kitchen. I put it, once it's filled in, then I take it to the large toter in the garage.
Yeah.
It's a much easier thing than taking, you know, a peach or, or banana out individually. And I think there's a lot of things of feedback that's come on Kensington, and I think.
Like that.
If they were highlighted, uh, I think people are like, oh, okay, well, this makes sense, it's a little easier for us to handle this than saying, what am I gonna do with?
I'd say it makes such a big difference in your trash, in, in your kitchen trash, when you're putting the food waste in the caddy. That, I mean, I can go for three, four days with my, just my regular trash, I mean, you know.
Another thought, because there was so much on the list about where to source the bags. We thought about walking over to Stroh Snyder's and saying, hey, these are the size of our bins. Can you guys?
It's easier to buy them. Really, I know. Supporting local businesses, but I'm not sure that, um. When we get. Yeah, Stroh Snyder's is, you know, you're asking them to buy something and then they'll mark it up and, you know, the small bags, I think. Yeah.
It's always a way to say, hey. You can get them at Stroh Snyder's, just like anything else, like, maybe it's cheaper in another source.
Yeah.
But if you run out of bags and you really need them today.
We can talk to Bill or Mayor, but maybe, I think it'd be better if we talk first and get some ideas of how we wanna move forward, I mean, I. I think a lot of the feedback has been positive on Kensington, I think she's getting people comfortable with this, again, we're four months in, coming out of the summer, people. They're like, what is this, we're still getting emails and phone calls about trying to return the bin. Obviously, we're telling them to stay with the house, just like we do with recycling over.
Yeah.
Just a change of habits.
My hardest part has been remembering to put it out on Wednesday.
What is a good number, we're at five K per month, what's the, what's a good number, ten?
I have no idea, I don't know, I mean, that's something we're trying to gauge, uh, I shouldn't be a thousand pounds more than compost crew.
I mean, I went around the west side on a Thursday and there are not a lot of bins out.
Yeah.
There's probably like twenty five. Yeah, on our side.
Yeah, but that's more of the, I mean, I think we only ever got the compost crew up to fifty maybe.
Yeah, for the whole town.
Yeah.
No, it was, it, it, because they did it at twenty five. Being uh, price break points, so it got between seventy five and ninety, or seventy five and a hundred, I think it maxed at eighty five. Um, but that was max, and then it would drop a few, and then, you know, some residents would leave, new ones would come in, uh, we never broke a hundred.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Good, nope, that's it, oh, wait, one more thing. You're gonna talk about all the town events, but I do wanna know, you're always seeking volunteers to help organize the town menorah lighting. Yes. Huge audience. Yeah, please reach out to me if you would like to, um, volunteer, I know. Good, well, we'll all be there.
What do you need volunteers for?
Volunteers basically help us with getting that hot cider ready, picking up donuts. Um, staffing the tables to hand out drinks and supplies, it's a lovely event, it's about an hour. And, um, we're trying to bring in younger generation, younger families to be a part of. Yeah, well, uh, of, uh, Canter Lindsay is not at Temple Emmanuel, so. I will check with Kazan Fredkin. Okay. I don't know who replaced the person. Oh, there is somebody there, I'll ask my friends this weekend. Okay, I mean, it would be nice to invite both or. Yeah, I will. Yeah. Good. Okay. But otherwise, the usual. But, um, I mean, I'll be there, you put me to work, um. We usually do, you're, you're the sound person. On the sound. So, uh, and that's, uh, I've, actually, it was funny, cause I, December fourteenth is the menorah lighting. And that was the same date as the Kensington Historical Society. Holiday party, so when I said, oh, that's the same day as the menorah lighting, they moved it, they moved the time. I wonder about that, I noticed. Yeah, you can do both. Yeah, thank you. Okay, um, good? Yes, that's all, thank you.
No, updates have been given.
Oh, right. Uh, any questions, oh, I, I do have, I mean, I, I need to know who's coming to the committee for Montgomery, we need to build a table. I know Anne, I just wanna, I'm.
The double double.
This is the double, so Anne, Nate.
Next Friday, right?
Stuart, did you have your hand up? No, that's fine, I can't, uh, this year I can't go either, I got a commitment, it was supposed to be on a. Thursday that got moved to Friday and I have to. And it's at Strathmore this year. And it is at Strathmore, so don't go to the Marriott.
Not sent the invitation to our town attorney, so if you'd like to ask.
Would you like to come to the committee for Montgomery and sit at our table? Can I put you down? December fifth, are you muted?
Sorry, I'd love to, um, I'm looking, looking right now.
Okay. Is that a yes?
Give me a sec.
Okay.
Uh, that's a yes.
Woo, alright. Alright, that'll give you my list here, um, and it is at Strathmore. Music Center, okay.
Nice.
Well, so when I will forward you the flyer, so you have it.
Okay.
I don't think they've announced the speaker yet, correct?
Have not.
Okay, so, which means they're still working on that. Yeah, okay, we did that, um, you guys have all the dates, um, there was, did you see the, uh, petition from Carrie Colo?
Yeah, you responded.
I did, um, to me, that is something, I don't know if you guys wanna send it on the listserv, but it wouldn't be something the town would sign, but certainly individuals. I didn't know whether you guys wanted to.
First, Stuart, do you wanna do it as?
Send that around the petition that she had?
It was for safety, it was basically, I thought it was in response to the article that we sent. It was predated that.
Yeah.
Was it really?
Yeah, so, I think you had sent the S H A letter and referred to the opinion piece.
Yeah.
Right, well, I just. Yeah.
Find it and respond.
It's under Carrie and her last name is C O E L H O. Colo?
Okay.
Yeah.
Stuart, just let me know if you want me to do that.
Alright, here we go, yeah.
Okay. Um, and, uh, just, uh, I got, I got the okay from Matt, uh, to borrow the town truck. And Marco and I went up to Gaithersburg and we moved Toys for Tots toys.
Oh, I wonder.
Yeah, that was, it was really great. Uh, it was good that we went, cause they only had another pickup truck, and then they did have a U-Haul, but it couldn't pull, there was a lot of stuff that we moved, uh, from the. Uh, where the police, Montgomery County, uh, Police Department has their big headquarters in Gaithersburg, and we moved it over to, uh, Oakmont. Uh, street warehouse on Oakmont, near the transfer station, so it took us two trips and without the town truck. We, it would have had to have three trips. Oh, wow. So, um, anyway, I was talking to the gentleman from Turner Construction who, he had a short bed truck. Um, he said that, uh, some years they don't have any toys left over, and some years they do have toys left over, and so, um, but they. Will set it all up, and so, I took Marco out to dinner at Mission Barbecue and there was a Toys for Tots box right there. Anyway, but, uh, no, it was, it was, it was great to, to volunteer for that, so, uh, thanks, Matt, for letting me use the town.
Here we are, we are drop location.
We are a drop location, absolutely. Yeah, so anyway, okay.
Starting now.
Oh, shoot, that reminds me, Barry had asked me about coats. All right, um, all right, that's all I've got. Any questions from the audience? I'm gonna go ahead since it's eight thirty, um, uh, to do public appearances. If there's anybody out there that has a question that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Joe?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Furman. Um, on the, uh, just, just a couple of comments, and, um, one of them does go back to the S H A letter. But first, I, I thought the October signage was quite good. I thought that was really very interesting. And, and I learned something. I learned that the state's exercise is walking. I didn't know that. I mean, it's not a big deal. But it's an interesting factoid that, um, that, uh, one of the October signs, um, uh, was advertised. So nicely done. Uh, in that S H A letter, uh, I, I didn't see, and maybe I missed it. But I saw no reference to speed cameras along University Boulevard. And at the time of the, uh, traffic fatality in September, uh, some of the local news reporting. Lamented the absence of speed cameras on that stretch of University Boulevard. And these news reports specifically mentioned, um, the, um, how, how the speed cameras had helped tremendously. In enforcing the thirty, I believe it's thirty mile an hour speed limit along University Boulevard there. And, uh, I don't know, I think the county is expected to restore those speed cameras if they haven't already. But nonetheless, uh, that seems like a very wise and prudent option. Uh, to, to reduce speeds on that, on that stretch of highway, which is, you know, as we know. Heavily traveled and, and often at speeds.
Yeah, the, uh, the speed camera that had been there was a temporary, they moved them around. It's actually Montgomery County that moves them around, uh, not state. And, um, after the incident, they did, uh, put a permanent camera there. Uh, so that will be there, uh, for a while, but I think we did mention.
The third paragraph.
On the front, yeah.
We acknowledge the installation of speed cameras, slight narrowing of the lanes.
Good.
It was in the letter.
I did a, uh, I did a search for speed cameras. The only cameras that came up were the references to the zoom cameras on the online. But nonetheless, I'm glad to see that.
The, and the other thing I think that's worth noting, cuz I didn't know it until, um, Delegate Solomon mentioned it, is that, uh, last month. I mean, just terrible timing, but they were also going through a changeover of vendors in the county speed camera program, which is part of why. They had removed those temporary ones, including the ones along University Avenue. Uh, Boulevard, um, but with, um, the delegates, you know, in District eighteen really. Pressing S H A, they prioritize replacing that camera, which is why it's, it is there, Joe. And it, when you go up there, it's.
It's a monster. You can't miss it.
Yeah, it's, um.
Well, yeah, I'm very familiar with that camera, not, not in any kind of, uh, illegal way or finding way, but it's, it's something that, uh.
I'm glad you clarified that, Joe.
I, I just mean, it is like a piece of, um, you know.
Some of the residents, though, uh, had, had lamented its absence, and I think that, that even if it is a county, uh, camera. It does show the, the potential coordination between county, state, and, and even town of Kensington in, uh, in making sure that that is a, um. Uh, an, an element in the, uh, in the strategy.
Yep, I agree.
For the, for the town manager. Uh, I was wondering if, uh, you could elaborate on the Littledale improvements, uh, that you mentioned in passing. Littledale and Saint Paul, you had mentioned, but anyway, uh, does this include the upgraded crosswalk at, uh, Littledale and Kensington Parkway?
Yeah, so the building pavement should happen before Thanksgiving, uh, weather permitting, and then permanent crosswalks and striping. Stop bars will be installed. Uh, we're looking also to put an always stop. Um, we have some concerns with the north-south traffic, but that needs to go through review. Because we're dealing with the county intersection, Joe's gonna have to work with M C D O T to get that approved.
And, and did you say because of the weather, it'd be temporary striping, and then they'll do the real striping in the spring?
Striping right after. Um, and then the thermo will come in through a separate contract. Uh, we haven't scheduled it yet. There's not enough work at that intersection to get a contractor in here yet. We'll have to find some other work or work with another municipality that has something.
But the, but it, but at Littledale and Kensington Parkway, will that be the permanent crosswalk, or is that still gonna be temporary? For the time being?
The material they're using is temporary, but there will be permanent striping. When they're able to get a contractor in to do it.
There is striping there now. There is white striping there now, and I understood the town manager to say that that would be ultimately replaced by. What I call the faux brick pavers, but it.
We're not planning on putting the faux brick pavers in that location.
No, we'll use continental, there'll be continental, the stripe, the horizontal stripes there. They'll put basically tape down until the contractor comes in.
I see. All right, thanks for the clarification. Is that, um, four-way stop? Is that anywhere near in the, uh, in the near future? Is that to be installed anytime soon?
So, our traffic engineer will review that with the traffic engineer for the district, M C D O T. If they, if they say they're okay with it, it's a pretty easy install for us. We just, because we're dealing with.
Cuz three out of the four corners are county roads, is that correct?
It's our intersection, but we're dealing with county roads, so they have to approve the always stop.
And they, and they don't come together as a perfect crossroads either. There's a little bit of a. One of them, Littledale, in fact, or maybe it's. Well, one of the roads is, is kind of off-center in terms of meeting that intersection, but anyway. Uh, I was curious to, to know if you could tell us, uh, how much the town paid in overtime for Annie's work on November first. And, and was the brewery asked for a contribution to her overtime, given that the sole reason that she was. On overtime that, that day was because of this day-long event at the brewery?
Uh, we did not ask, uh, Baby Cat Brewery to cover the costs. Uh, code enforcement is a general requirement of the town. Uh, we asked Annie to work an event that we knew would have been some problems with parking. There is overtime budgeted for all hourly employees. Uh, Annie doesn't receive that much other than Labor Day. This was not a cost issue for us. And, uh, I believe she worked seven hours. I'd have to go back and look, and, uh, it would be what her hourly rate is.
So, so what would that be then? Seven hours at what?
I don't remember what Annie's hourly rate is.
We talked about this committee, um, meeting and, and felt like this was a reasonable cost. We wanna support business events and community events. Um, right now, we're, as, as you've heard. Exploring different ways to minimize challenges with parking.
And as it was also mentioned at that meeting, uh, this was identified as a recent one-off event. That no other, um, event has really, in recent memory, has, has triggered the, uh. Uh, presence of Annie on a, on a, on a, uh, on a weekend day. This, this might be, uh, she, she may have been there for the car show. I don't know, but, uh, the uniqueness of this event and, and, uh, and the partnership potential that's there. They could be asked to contribute to the, to overtime pay was, was also discussed at that meeting.
Anything else?
Yes, in the, um, see something, say something category. I'm wondering, Mayor Furman, if there are any updates that you have on the, uh, appeals to political violence that have been scrawled on the top rail. The pedestrian bridge at Kensington Cabin Parkway. These appeals, uh, are, are known to you. And, uh, I've also brought them to the attention of Kate Stewart, but as mayor of Kensington, I just wonder if you have any updates about these. Um, about these, these recurring appeals. They're, they're scrawled in chalk and they, um, um, you know, are, are washed away with rain. But, uh, whoever's doing this, um, returns and, and, and writes it on the top rail of the, of the, uh, of the pedestrian bridge there. Kensington Cabin, Cabin Park, and, you know, lots of people use that park to go from Kensington Parkway into the basketball court area. This included the, uh, the family program at Rosh Hashanah back in September, when dozens, dozens of people were, were using that bridge. To cross into the basketball area where there was a special morning service. And, uh, and that, and that, uh, appeal to political violence was, uh, was scrawled on that, uh, top rail of the bridge. So, any updates is what I'm asking.
Uh, I have no other updates, uh, as you know, and you've said yourself, it's not our jurisdiction. Um, I've, you know, asked our own Public Works to occasionally check it, but they can't do that every day. And obviously, the person who's doing it is persistent, but is, as I said, she's not using, he or she, not using paint. They're using chalk, which is washable, and, um, you know. If it were me going that way, I would carry a rag and I'd wipe it off myself every day. That's what I would do.
Even though it's not your jurisdiction. Anyway, I, I know this, this might be an opportunity for, uh, for town count, uh, for town county, uh, cooperation on this. Because, you know, quite frankly, it's, it's, it's appalling and it's an embarrassment, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is that it?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, um, let's hit the resolutions.
Uh, before you receive this resolution number R dash seventeen dash seventeen five, a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington. Authorizing the town managers to accept the proposal for Playground Specialists Incorporated to install this PlaySpec Rainbow Pour-in-Place. P I P servicing in Saint Paul Park. Uh, the council discussed this at the October thirty-first work session. Uh, this is the same resolution that we presented previously. Uh, staff will continue to work with Jeff Stone, our rep with PlaySpec. To get an updated, uh, contract, and which would be a separate resolution for the sun shade, the new equipment that we wanna do. Uh, we just wanted to get this on the schedule for Jeff and then work through the other equipment, depending on what the council would like to do. Um, for the main playground area, so.
Yeah, I think we talked about, uh, installing at least maybe two different things.
Yeah, we talked about the spring loader or spring riders, uh, possibly being retired, just there's been some ongoing maintenance issues with those introducing. Um, two cozy cones, the, you know, you can sit in there, they help with, um. Uh, spec, spectrum-related disorders and giving a, a safe place to play in there. And then possibly changing out one of the benches to something that maybe has some shade element as well, but it, you know. And, and then lastly would be in the swing bays in the far back corner, uh, by the basketball court. Um, just looking at whether or not one of those infant swing bays can be swapped out for, again, still an infant. Because that's the, the younger age area swings, but one that has, you know, a higher back for, uh, kids who may not have core strength. From a, uh, disability. So, to, uh, town manager's point, um, we've talked with PlaySpec about these. They are pulling prices and some other things. Um, changing a, a swing bay typically isn't a big thing, cuz it's just what's on the chains. The main thing that goes into the ground, we want to. Uh, get approved, get ordered, and have installed prior to, yeah, prior to pouring the surface. And the surface should be the, the last thing to go. And then acknowledge that in the work session, we also decided to, um, put a, you know, a strategic pause on. Phase three and come back and revisit it, you know, maybe next spring.
Right, yeah. I also just wanna acknowledge in the work session that we did have quite a bit of discussion about the research that had been presented. And the legwork that Connor had done, speaking of other jurisdictions in Pennsylvania and Maryland. Um, and confirming that the poured-in-place is noted, um, material, as noted in the minutes, meets the state standards. And, uh, we did not feel there was enough evidence to, um, prevent us from moving forward with that material. Though we would like to examine the corking option in phase three.
Yeah, um, and I also just wanted to thank Connor in particular, but I think everyone did more research going into that meeting. But Connor provided additional research and studies and having conversations with other local jurisdictions, like, like, uh, was mentioned. And I think that was really a good process. I just wanted to commend every one of you. It was out in the, in the, in the last town council meeting, but we really did have a, a pretty full room here. Um, with some very good public testimony, and I think, um, really good discussion on both sides of the, of the issue. Which I think, um, prompted us to then say, look, we're hearing new information, let's take a pause. And deliberate this a little bit more, and I think, Anne, in, in addition to a couple of things that you noted, I just wanted to, to flag, I think, is Connor. You, you raised a few of these points that are leading to my vote for yes for this, because of, I think, again, many of the things you said. But also that, um, the, the, the surface that's being, or the, the rubber that's being used is kind of this new age rubber. That's, I think, gonna be helpful to, yeah, to, to identify that in a moment, but that, a lot of the concerns that are in the research. That's showing, that's emerging, let's say, on the health, public health, um, drawbacks and impacts of the rubber. Is really exacerbated by the direct exposure, exposure from sunlight. So, a lot of the, where this will go in the phase two is already covered by tree canopy. And then will also hopefully be covered by the space that's not yet covered by the tree canopy, by this additional canopy that we'll consider. In another vote for, um, when we get that quote back. And then the fact that M C P S is using it in all their new playgrounds, too, I think is, um, is, is, is quite a convincing argument. But that doesn't mean that we should, we don't wanna still take as much information as possible and stay on top of it for when the phase three happens. Because, um, it might make sense to, to do the trade-off and go with the more expensive corking, because it, depending on.
Well, the three will really be out in the sun if you go further. That would definitely be in the sun.
Yeah, but I just wanted to thank all of, uh, all of, for Connor in particular, for all the research.
Yeah, he, he's learned above and beyond. I, I think you are passionate about getting this, you know, for the kids that are, you know, really enjoying this part now.
You know, if we had just voted on it, that would be great. We'd be moving ahead. But other things that came about through the process were, you know, the State of Maryland's Disability Council member. And, and the Developmental Disability Council representatives who came in, and, you know, they also talked about the need for these playgrounds. For inclusive play, and then members of our community whose children are, have developmental disabilities and, and truly what the impact of these are. Right, and that, um, I think, you know, we had some really good comments from people who were concerned about material mixes and what was being used. But also, I don't think had a full appreciation for what we were building, and when they heard it. Um, you know, the impact I had was one of the members afterwards, who was like, this is really cool. Like, I didn't, I didn't know the impacts of play on, you know, this part of the population that is often left out. Because of the materials that.
You know, that mulch is ADA, you know, compliant. You know, it's, well, that's really not. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. We've talked about this, that's right. Is there a motion?
Uh, I'll submit a motion to, uh, adopt resolution number R dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-five. A resolution, the mayor and council of town, Kensington, authorizing the town manager to accept the proposal from Playground Specialists. To install PlaySpec Rainbow Pour-in-Place surfacing at Saint Paul Park.
Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Number two?
Thank you, council. Uh, before you receive this resolution number R dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five. Resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington, authorizing town manager to accept the proposal from Shannon Baum's signs. For the refurbishment of the existing antique rose sign at the intersection of Connecticut and Howard Avenue, and this is the sign that the council will redeem this evening.
We want green.
With hooks to hang things.
That's right. Is there a, um, any discussion?
I just want the record to reflect, the council member Sparker referred to them as grevey packer colors.
That is not, that's a mischaracterization.
We have a recording.
Move to strike.
For reference, we asked for, uh, just a little bit of additional funding, uh, based on the proposal that Shannon Baum gave us. Uh, there is some concern on Shannon Baum's part that once they actually, the roof was signed, there could be a little bit more, uh, uh, work to be done. So we just wanted to put a little, add it, put a little on there, so we don't have to come back and ask for.
Right, yeah, they, they really don't know what's.
Once they bring it off, it. I mean, Shannon Baum's been our sign contractor for over twenty years. Uh, they've installed almost every sign in the town, so, um, we're pretty confident.
Yeah, I know, they're good.
And I don't think it would add much cost, but just to reflect council member Sparker's, like, if we can have those hooks. If there, if there's, you know, incorporated into the build, incorporated into the painting.
Well, you need to, well, we have banners downstairs. I mean, actually, we're. I mean, actually, we are downstairs in the room that can, if you need the size of where, especially the width. So where they should go. Okay. Uh, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number R dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five to accept the proposal from Shannonbaum's signs for the refabrication of the existing antique rose sign.
Is there a second?
I can.
All those, uh, who?
Aye.
Number three?
Thank you, council. Uh, before you, this evening is resolution number R dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the town council of Kensington confirming the appointments of John Blick and Paul Sexton to the development review board, D R V, which were made by the mayor. Uh, we'd like to uh, formally thank uh, Leslie Maxim and Mark Hudson for serving on the D R V for, I believe, four years, two terms each.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, for those of you who do not know John Blick, he's a commercial property owner in the town. Uh, he owns uh.
The draft buildings.
He owns the draft building.
And conquered.
Uh, yes, um, we reached out and we think uh, John Blick will be a good uh, member of the D R V, especially if we go through the new sector plan. He will be able to provide uh, a voice for uh, commercial properties that we have not had previously. The D R V will be working with Montgomery planning uh, quite a bit uh, along with council member Crimms and council member Anger, Ango over the next two years. Um, and then obviously, uh, Paul Sexton is a former town council member uh, and resident of the town.
And he's coming in as a resident, not a business.
As a resident.
And a business community member, but he's a resident on, as, assignment.
Yes. Okay.
I just want to also take, you know, reflect what Matt said about uh, Leslie Maxim and Mark Hudson, because during their four years, we did have several applications and projects that came through, some that have been built, um, some that are approved but not yet built. Um, and, you know, for, you know, during that period, there were times where we had three or four applications being reviewed at once and we were meeting multiple times a month. Um, sometimes multiple times in a week, for a month. It was a very busy time period for the D R V. And both Leslie and Mark were just, you know, as we've been very blessed with all of our D R V members, but very active, great questions, uh, so deeply, deeply appreciate their volunteering their time in the town.
Yeah, and it's, it's been a quiet last two years.
It has.
But I think with the planning, working with planning is gonna, you know, bring some good meetings and uh, opportunities to really focus on that part of town, particularly the north side. So.
It's good to welcome them. Um, it's sad to leave, lose Leslie and Mark, um, especially since there was a little gender balance on the. I feel like um, we should be encouraging more women to be a part of the D R V in the future.
I was gonna ask about that.
Yeah.
It's like, it's, it's, it's very striking when you see everybody lined up on the agenda, but.
I, I spoke to both Mark and to Leslie and made sure that they know that the meetings are open to the public.
Yeah.
And that they shall not be wallflowers if they see something that they are interested in and want to know. And I, I believe they will still be very actively engaged and developed.
Fantastic.
Just a point of order for the newbie over here, um, for the appointments, does the mayor nominate the new members and we confirm them? Is that the procedure?
Correct, that's why, so this resolution is actually from the council as opposed to the mayor and council. You are, so you are confirming Mayor Furman's appointments to the D R V.
Okay, and do, do they, are they required to submit like resumes and stuff like that? Or is this just by name only?
A lot of financials.
Oh, so there is some conflicts and stuff like that.
Yep.
Yep, the, so there's three categories, as you can kind of see next to their names. There's professional, so those members are people that are in a trade related to development. Sure. They might be land use attorneys, they might be developers, uh, you know, can work for construction companies, et cetera, engineers. Um, then two that are residents, clearly just need to be residents of the town. And then uh, two from the council are, are. Got it, okay. Um, and then two from our business community. That could be anywhere within a business community. And so, um, we don't have a resume because we largely know that they meet those qualifications. But then they are subject to the same financial disclosures that the council are.
So that breakdown is spelled out in our.
In the D R V guidelines. Yeah, it's, it's, it's in the pack. I saw it, so I, I was, I just didn't know like if they, there was circulation of their credentials, so.
We don't exactly have people knocking on the door.
No, no, I understood, I understand, I understand. I'm just doing.
Yeah. Okay, uh, need a motion.
All right, I'll move to adopt resolution R dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, uh, the resolution for the towns of Ken, town of Kensington to confirm the appointments of John Blick and Paul Sexton to the D R V.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And number four?
Thank you, council. Uh, this is town staff's favorite resolution every year. Uh, resolution number R dash twenty-three dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington proclaiming November to be municipal government works month in Kensington, Maryland. Did we get the, did we get the?
Didn't get the flag.
Did we get the, okay. We'll get the flag.
It needs to go, it needs to, it needs a bath, you know that. Maybe a new flag next year. How's that? Can we get anyone next year? It's getting pretty rough. Right, okay, uh, we're almost out of November, so uh, but we'll get it up there. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number R dash twenty-three dash twenty twenty-five to proclaim November to be municipal government works month in Kensington, Maryland.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Would you be, if we actually didn't vote for that? We have to give the flag.
We get a little, we get a little plaque for that.
Those are banner cities.
Okay, that's right. We want our banner city. That's why we need it.
It would be.
All right, I'm gonna confirm our next meeting is Wednesday, December tenth. And everybody make it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Anne can make it.
Yep.
Yep, got it.
Stuart?
I'll be there.
All right, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.